It's 1:00 PM and I'm going to call the June 7, 2023 zoning board of adjusted adjustment meeting to order. Karen?
Janet Brown.
Here.
Tim Hess.
Here.
Cliff Wilkerson. Cliff is absent, so I won't be calling him for the rest of the meeting. Ed Wigno.
Here.
Stacy Parks.
Here.
Okay, we have the abbreviated minutes that have been provided to us. Is there any additions or discussion or corrections? I just have the fact that Swanson voted in two different spots and she was absent, and then that I wasn't on there saying I voted. Okay? So I need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, the minutes have been approved.
Fair vote.
Okay.
Janet Brown?
Yes.
Tim Hess?
Yes.
Cliff, oops, I'm not going to call him. Ed Wigno?
Yes.
Stacy Parks?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes have been approved and will be kept on file. The only case we have before the board today is 23001 at 823 Springdale Drive, Allen and Gail Thompson for a special use permit pertaining to an accessory building expansion. So the applicant seeks a special use permit to expand an existing non-conforming residential accessory building located at 823 Springdale Drive. Do we have someone here to speak to this case?
I do, Allen Thompson, and I'd like to apologize to everybody right off that I'm disabled, so I have a back injury, I have to have surgery in the fall, so I'm not going to be standing up if I can avoid it.
Okay, hold on a second. I don't know, yeah, you might, we might be able to...
Thanks. Sorry.
Not at all.
Thanks so much, man.
Stephen, we're running into a little bit of a problem, hang on, he's...
Thank you so much.
You betcha.
How close do you have to be to the mic to pick up?
He'll... Hang on, Stephen's coming here.
Gail usually says I talk too loud, so it should be okay.
Railroad.
Thanks so much, man, really appreciate it.
Okay, I want you to say, state your name and your address.
I'm Allen Thompson, and this is my wife, Gail, from 823 Springdale Drive.
Do you swear to tell the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
You can speak.
Oh, I didn't know how the proceedings were going to go. I know that the city has initially declined to issue a building permit for the addition, and I didn't know if the council is up to speed on the city's current position or the staff's current position on this or not. So do you guys want to hear the staff's position on our initial building permit request, or do you want me to just give a presentation and go from there?
So you're talking about the staff, the building and neighborhood services? Karen will speak to that.
Okay, do you want to hear that beforehand? I know she presented, there's a board member packet that's given to all the board members prior to the meeting, I don't know how soon before the meeting you got it, it looks like it's eight pages. If everybody's read that, then we're all on the same page.
Yes.
All right, well, then I'll go ahead and give the presentation then. Here we go. Hello, my name's Allen Thompson, and this is my wife, Gail, both from 823 Springdale Drive, Clinton, Iowa. We'd like to thank all the board members for donating your personal time to make our local government work for all Clintonians. Little background information should be given to explain how we ended up before you. In the fall of 2016, we bought the property in question and finding no issues following a title search, reviewing the seller's disclosure statements, and receiving no advisement from real estate agents that there may be a possible problem with the use of the property. In 2016, we applied for and received a building permit and began an extensive reconstruction of the home after receiving no indication from the city's building and neighborhood service department that there was any reason we could not do so. In 2023, we worked with members of the Clinton City Council and other interested parties on ways to amend the zoning ordinances to allow for special use designation to be used to allow larger accessory building sizes. After this ordinance was amended, we applied for a building permit. After a few days, we received a call from Building and Neighborhood Service advising that we could not put an addition on our accessory building as our property was zoned C2, and the city believes Section 159.047, nonconforming uses applied to our situation, so a permit would not be issued. If we had been advised in 2016, before investing considerable time and money in a property we were not sure we could totally enjoy, we would not have made such an investment without further review of the issue. We believe the zoning board of adjustment is the proper authority to review the evidence and has a legal standing to authorize a granting of our requesting building permit as detailed in our previous submission. This previous submission, I don't know if everybody got or not, but the original application for the appeal had a lot of extra information on it that you may have gotten. In the informational packet, Building and Neighborhood Services prepared for you, the second page lists nine ordinances they direct your attention to. Should you have any questions on those items following the presentation of the main thrust of our appeal, we will be glad to respond to them point by point. Moving fast forward to Staff's summary recommendations page, Staff cites two reasons...I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
Yeah, I don't know.
This is Steve Weyinger, city attorney. I just think it would help the board to clarify what...I'm a little lost for what this application is for at this point. I was under the presumption it's for a special use permit. Is that not the case? I'm curious what the applicant is requesting. Thank you.
The original appeal had on it that it was also for, it was for the new special use permit and any issues associated with that.
Well, I would just point out that the board has limited authority. It can review applications for special use permits, it can review application for variances, and it can appeal zoning administrator actions. I'm not sure we've had any formal final administrative action, so I just want everyone to kind of be aware of what the board can actually do and what these proceedings are about.
Thank you very much. I would also state that I've spent the better part of a month scouring through those documents, and I feel confident that when this is all done and said, that we will see that the ordinances clearly support the authority of this board to make the changes that I'm herein requesting. So without...
Could I simply ask what your request of the board is? Are you requesting a variance? Are you requesting a special use permit? Or are you appealing a final action of the zoning administrator?
Not a variance. The special use permit is also, that the thing that brought the special use permit into this situation was a decision by the Building and Neighborhood Services Director.
And what decision is that?
That this is a nonconforming property and therefore doesn't, it can't be used for a commercial use because it's C2, it can't be used for the fully to enjoy all the parts, all the things that a residential use could be used either, but I think that if I'm able to give my presentation, it'll clarify a lot of these questions.
Well, I'm just curious if you're appealing an action or her opinion?
An action.
And that action would be?
Denying a building permit.
Yes, thank you.
In the informational packet, Building and Neighborhood Services prepared for you, the second page lists nine ordinances they direct your attention to. Should you have any questions on those items following the presentation of the main thrust of our appeal, we'd be glad to respond to them point by point. Moving fast forward to Staff's summary recommendation page, Staff cites two reasons they believe negating our request for special use authorization for an addition to our existing Morton building is in evidence. The first unidentified citation cited read, quote, "A nonconforming use may not be enlarged, extended, reconstructed, or structurally altered unless the use is changed to a permitted use in that district," unquote. That citation fails to consider that 159.047D Delta provides an exception to those provisions that would otherwise prevent changes herein being appealed, which happens to be in evidence in this instant case. 159.047D Delta states, quote, "No conforming use except when required to do so by law or ordinance shall be enlarged, extended, reconstructed, or structurally altered unless the use is changed to a use permitted in the district," unquote. The property in question is one of the larger acreages within the city proper and is surrounded by hundreds of trees and bushes. Due to the unique and special circumstances and characteristics of our property in size and composition, a lot of tools and equipment are required to maintain the property without violating a dozen ordinances on provisions requiring specific maintenance of the property and the requirement to keep all tractors, trailers, wagons, and farm machinery within a building. This requires a lot of maintenance to keep up, and at 72 years old, I need all the machinery and equipment available. We take pride in the presentation of our property, which Bill Wilford, the developer of Riverstone Crossing, cited as one of the reasons he was attracted to his future development site. We currently don't have enough building space to get all our equipment inside, although we are required by law to do so. The following evidence that we are required by law to maintain our property and to do so without leaving unnecessary equipment necessary to comply with these ordinances outside. 90.01A, definition of a nuisance. A, whatever is injurious to the health, indecent, or unreasonably offensive senses or an obstruction to free use of property so as essentially to interfere unreasonably with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property is a nuisance. 90.01B, the provisions of this chapter shall apply to all residential and non-residential properties and structures located within the corporate limits of the city. Interesting fact, when calling Buildings and Neighborhood Services, the first extension offered is for the nuisance reporting. 90.02I, nuisances enumerated, weeds, brush, dense growth of all weeds, brush, grass, other botanical growth, and other similar vegetation in the city which constitute a health, safety, fire hazard which are obnoxious or unsightly. 90.02J, dead or diseased trees, any tree in such a state of deterioration that the part of the tree is likely a fall and damaged property to cause injury to persons is considered a nuisance. 90.02M5, further nuisances enumerated, vehicle means any device in, upon, or by which a person or property is or may be transported or drawn upon a highway, street, excepting devices moved by human power or used exclusively upon stationary rails or track, and including, without limitation, a motor vehicle, automobile, truck, motorcycle, tractor, trailer, buggy, wagon, farm machinery, any of which may be licensed or unlicensed or any combination thereof. 90.04, nuisance is prohibited, the creation or maintenance of a nuisance is prohibited. A nuisance, public or private, may be abated in the manner provided for in this chapter or state law. 94.01, the purpose of the chapter is to require owners of residential, commercial, industrial properties to cut their grass, weeds, vines, and brush when it exceeds eight inches in height. 94.03, all owners of property abutting any road right of way shall maintain their property in the abutting road right of way by cutting or destroying all grass, weeds, vines, and brush when the growth exceeds eight inches high. 94.07, failure to comply, if the property owner fails to maintain the property as required this chapter after notice is given, is provided in this chapter, the inspector shall order the work to be done by the city employees or by a contractor. The total cost of the expense of the work, including any administration fees, shall be paid by the property owner. The city shall assess the offending property only $200 to offset the administration fees, and the contractor costs for lots one-fourth acre or less, with an assessed cost increase of $100 for every one-fourth acre thereafter. Failure to pay shall result in the cost being assessed against the property for collection in the same manner as a property tax. 159.099BC, outdoor storage prohibited, except during a reasonable period during construction or maintenance as determined by Building and Neighborhood Services Director, outdoor storage of vehicles, equipment, tools, supplies, materials, and other items on the site is prohibited. Staff's second reason for belief that we don't qualify for our requested special use permit is because, quote, "The applicant does not qualify for a special use permit under 159.049D Delta 26 because the property is Zone C2," unquote. If we were not for the, if it were not for the exception clause we qualify for in 159.047D Delta, we may not have otherwise qualified for consideration of special use authorization to put an addition on our existing Morton building. Staff believes the exceptions for M, A, and R districts are actually the only districts qualifying for recent council relief and accessory building size. In fact, the recently passed ordinance number 2723 contains a chart that clearly shows, clearly showing that we qualify for exemption under special use, specifically in provision providing for any district whose use is residential, that's use, use is residential, having between three and five acres can enjoy aggregate ground cover of 2,500 square feet with a 24-foot height. In addition, under restrictions in that chart for that category, it states, "Building must be 10 feet away from the property line for every one foot exceeding 18 feet in height up to 5,000 square foot with special use permit." Our initial appeal contained the information required by 159.049B, and we satisfied 159.049C. 159.049B3 says, "If the board's findings appear to be negative as to all subjects referred to in divisions 2A through F listed, then the application shall be granted. If the findings are affirmative as to any subject, then the permit shall be denied." Special use would be found under 159.049D18, and it would be, the special use would be an accessory building. Thank you.
Okay, Karen, your staff report?
Okay. The applicant wishes to increase his residential accessory building square footage from 4,000 or 2,412 square feet, and this is detached accessory building. He also, I believe, has a three-car garage attached to the house. He wants to increase it another 7,100 square foot. Currently, he has 4.3 acres, he is Zone C2 commercial, he is what's called nonconforming residential. So he's legal nonconforming, which means he was there before the C2. I actually did some checking, I went back to engineering to see when this was zoned, and in 19, it was in the 60s was the farthest back she could look. So it's been zoned commercial since the 60s, so it's been commercial for a long time. He has to be in compliance, no building shall be erected, converted, enlarged without him being in compliance. He's currently legal nonconforming. The supplemental regulations say he can, with a special use, expand his residential building, but then I go back to, again, he's nonconforming, and what nonconforming says is you cannot expand a nonconforming use. You cannot enlarge it or expand it or alter it. I went back and I looked at the building permits that were on file, I have a swimming pool permit on file. They did some, must have done some interior work, I don't have a permit for that in my system, and if you're doing interior work, that doesn't have to do with expanding your property, so that's allowable. It's completely allowable. Expanding your property or expanding your buildings is not allowable under the nonconforming When he talks about the nuisances, I just want to touch on this for a moment, then I am going to turn it over to Steve for legal. He currently has 2,400 square feet of accessory building along with a three-car attached garage. You can, hang on, you can't just buy a bunch of stuff and say, "You have to let me build a bigger building to put it in it," okay? That's not what that nuisance clause is for. It says, "You're allowed this much space, put your stuff in this. If it doesn't fit, you'll have to find someplace else to put it." There's storage units, there's all kinds of stuff, but it doesn't mean you can build a 10,000-square-foot building on your property just because you have a lot of stuff and want to put it in there, okay? That's not the intent of what the nuisance is. It means you just have to have less stuff to fit in what's required. Anyway, you are supposed to store vehicles and lawn equipment and things like that in a building, but again, it doesn't mean you get to build a massive building because you have a lot of extra stuff, and it's going to be a nuisance. So we're not by law legally requiring them to build a bigger building because they have to store their stuff, okay? At that point, I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Thank you. Yeah, I will just reiterate Karen's point with respect to that provision of 159.047D nonconforming uses that the applicant cited, stating that no nonconforming use except when required to do so by law or ordinance shall be enlarged, extended, reconstructed, or structurally altered unless the use is changed to a use permitted in the district. I think Karen's on point with respect to the nuisance provisions. That is not a law that requires someone to enlarge, extend, reconstruct, or structurally alter. A better example of what I believe that ordinance has in mind is something like the Americans with Disabilities Act that would intervene in this case. For example, if a handicap ramp was required to provide entrance, that would be an intervening law that would require structural alteration of a nonconforming use, which the city would not be able to deny simply because it's a nonconforming use. In that case, federal law would come into play and require the city allow that. Very different from the nuisance scenario, which I think Karen aptly addressed. The other point here that the staff report makes is that there is no applicable special use in a C2 district. The provisions that enable the special use permit applicants relying on, as recently amended, and that would be, bear with me for a second here, that would be 159.049D26 states residential accessory buildings in A1, M1, M2, M3 with aggregate ground cover between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet, subject to compliance with Section 159.046G, okay? What you can gather from this is first, a property has to be in A1, M1, M2, or M3 for a special use to apply. You would then go to 140, oh, sorry, 159.046G. Even that provision, before leading into the chart, they, in the M, A, and R districts, accessory buildings shall not exceed those listed, oh, sorry, I'll reread that. In the A and R districts, the height and aggregate ground cover of all residential accessory buildings shall not exceed those listed below. Accordingly, everything in the following chart is predicated on the limitations that they... they only apply to the M, A, and R districts. Accordingly, when it says any district, that would refer back to M, A, and R, not C, you know, not manufacturing, or, sorry, I guess manufacturing, not industrial, not any other, simply A, and R. So, for those reasons, there is no applicable special use for the applicant to apply for, and by virtue of the non-conforming status of the property, it can't be enlarged in the manner requested. And, and I have nothing further than that.
I did want to add that Mr. Thompson does have, this was also in the staff report, he does have a, a path to success. He can appeal to the plan commission to be rezoned to a residential district, and at that point, he could actually apply to us for a special use, and at that point, he would be legal conforming, and what he is asking for could be granted without much comment.
And Karen, if I could intervene, I believe that was based on a, a prior version, I guess a recommended version of a, of a ordinance that the city council subsequently changed. I would, my position, and I would argue, that due to this being limited to A1, M1, M2, and M3, that special use would not be available in an R district. Again, irrelevant to what we're doing here today, but I don't want to mislead the, the applicant and have them wonder about that later.
May I have a chance to respond to everything that's been said so far?
Yeah.
Hopefully, you won't take this as a, an attack, but I have to point out that the building and neighborhood service director at a previous city council meeting within the last month has stood up and said, "If a farmer has a $300,000 tractor, he should be able to put his tractor inside." Why, so, my question is, are we telling that farmer that he has too much stuff, that he can't have some other things in his building, that he only should, he should make room for that tractor? Apparently, if you have three, a $300,000 tractor, you can have a bigger building, but if you are just a regular blue-collar working stiff, maybe it's a different set of rules. Regarding the, the permit question in 2016, permits were taken and displayed in the windows for electrical and extensive work on the property. I cannot explain the organization situation that the building and neighborhood services in 2016, but I assure you that, that permits were taken and displayed, and it was extensive work with major, we took half the roof off, all the garage and part of the house redesigned the roof and rebuilt it. So, it was major work, no exception taken. Regarding this continual claim that we don't have standing because of one part of, of 159.047-D, and then ignoring the part that allows our project to go forward, which is the one that includes the exception, and it's clear that the board has standing, to make a clarification, the board does not have standing to change a zone. You can't make changes on zones here. That's a different area. That's for the planning commission. But, when you can see in black and white that the exception is provided for in this, these rules, you're here to cut through the smoke and say, "Yes, there's the exception, except when required to do so by law, and here's the laws." Okay. The board has authority to add uses, so if there's any question about uses, that can be taken care of. As far as the R, M, A, and so forth, I called the city councilman last night and asked to clarify that for me. He directed me to the chart of their recently passed ordinance. It says right here quite clearly, "All districts." Two is in one of the, "All districts." It's one of, it's a district. It says, "Any district." And then the categories for those districts are, let's see, there should be a top page of this. Okay, the use, any district use, residential. I'm C2, but my use is residential, so it's okay, we're good so far. Size of the lot, three to five acres, we're 4.2. And then it goes on to say how, how, the height and so forth. In the exceptions here, it says that about the, how high you can go, and it says, "Up to 5,000 square foot with special use permit." We don't have to even think about what the intentions of the city council was. They made a chart for us. We can follow it. We can read it. We can see what it says. Any district residential three to five acres qualifies for the special use permit. It's a, does everybody have the recently passed ordinance by the city council? So, you can see for yourself. I mean, I can tell you, you don't have to believe me, but I, I can get you, you know, these if it's something you want to see.
I have copies here if you guys want to pass them down.
Any problems that are, have been stated so far are clearly things that the, the board can take care of and has the authority to grow Clinton. We can grow Clinton, put some more tax dollars into the tax proceeds, or we can, you know, not do that. As far as the option to give up the C2 standing, which, you know, if I knew at the time, you know, I'd had to really think about it, but the C2 standing, as it turns out, adds a lot of uses to that property. And to give that away, when I have heirs, I'm 72, and someday, my family will probably sell the property, it'll be worth more money in C2 status than it will, the way it is right now. So, I, I don't want to give that up. Otherwise, I could have started the building. I've had contractors waiting for two months now to get to this point, you know, and their, their dance cards are filling up quickly, so getting a concrete contractor in there and the, the builders, it's going to be a chore now. I'm going to be lucky to get it done by winter time if we can get through this today.
Are you done?
Yes, Melissa, you know, there's something else to respond to.
Do you have anything to add, Karen?
Mr. Thompson had said something one time about making the, the building commercial, and then he could commercially expand it, because it is C2, except for the primary use of the property is residential. And that was stated in one of the ordinances also, that you have to go with the primary use of the property, and that makes it legal non-conforming. But, other than that, I, I don't have anything to add.
I don't take exception to what she said. That was one of the ideas that I played with, but I could see from, after the study of the ordinances, that she's quite correct, that you can't have a commercial and a residential use at the same time. So, I could not legally do that unless the house was vacated and, you know, not used for a house anymore, a residence. So, I'm completely in agreement with her on that point, and I have no intention of doing the, of starting a business. It was just an idea she and I bandered about in her office to see if there was an easy way to move forward with this and get our contractors going.
Any questions?
This is Steve Whitinger. I would just like to interject one last time. It's necessary to look at the zoning regulations as a whole. You can't pick and choose one provision that says what you like and ignore the rest. Section 159.059-D 26 explicitly limits the special use permit for these types of buildings that the applicant needs to rely upon to the A1, M2, M1, and M3 districts. The applicant is in the C2 district. There is no special use permit that this board can grant. I, I believe you have, have an attorney there to, to assist you, and I think it would be beneficial to be clear what your authority is in this respect. Thank you.
Do we want to vote on the staff report?
I think we should.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Oh.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to interject here that Steve is correct, that you can't count on one special provision. He's picked out his special provision, and I've picked out my provision, that says there's an exception to his provision, and that we can build. In, in fact, history shows that we did build before, without any exception, and we also want to point out that the zoning board authority does allow it. Add more uses to the list of those permitted in C2, which is my territory, M2 and M3 districts, provided the uses are compatible in character as those listed insofar as emission of odor, dust, noise, gas, or smoke is concerned. And then, if you look at the document that we provided, the building and neighborhood services, as well as in the information that was given to you beforehand, you can see that, as far as agreeing with the prop of the fact-supporting requests, "The addition of 7,000 square foot of cold storage in our existing Morton Building will in no way increase traffic hazards or congestion. The building sits at the extreme west end of our property and is not a gathering spot, nor it will become one, simply because it's 1,700 square foot larger. The prop, the proposed building will not increase fire hazards. The building is not heated. The only possible source of fire would be from electrical system, and the addition will comply with current building code, just as the existing building code does. The existing building does. Increasing the size will not increase the fire hazard. The proposed addition will not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood. In fact, the developer of the Riverstone Crossing development stated the condition we kept our property in was an attractive feature of his decision to build there. We keep our property up. New addition and original building will be painted to match our home. This neighborhood has gone from a natural setting to one the city hopes to keep developing. We would simply be developing our property as provided for in the current city ordinances with the zoning board of adjustment special use authorization. Will not affect the character of the community. We won't be producing or selling drugs on our property or otherwise, nor engaging in any other illegal activities. We will not be polluting air or water. We won't be squandering our natural resources. We won't promote hate, anti-Semitism, or other antisocial activities and encourage others to do so. We will continue to maintain our properties to the same high standards we have today. We won't overtax public utilities. In fact, that was a concern many folks had with the development of the Riverstone Crossing Development, but our city engineer explained, examined the issues, and advised there was plenty of capacity for 70 new houses in our neighborhood. Three have been built to date. The 1,700-square-foot addition to our Morton Building shouldn't even be on the radar on this question. I've studied the comprehensive plan extensively and have determined that, as it is currently being interpreted, our proposed addition would be in harmony with it. The proposed addition is in an area that the planning commission and city council have agreed development should be encouraged. If approved, our addition will complement our home and follow all applicable building codes and/or ordinances." I once again direct your attention to the fact that you do have authority to add a use. If that's going to be a stumbling block, you can get through it.
And staff feels it does conflict with the comprehensive plan because it is an expansion of a residential use in a commercial district.
And then, we might also point out that if we would go with the proposed alternative choice, which is to give up our C2 standing, it is most likely that it would be approved by anybody that was hearing it to get it changed to a resident, because the building, whether it's residential or whether it's commercial, is going to be exactly the same. And so, why go to that extra step and spend another month or two months for me to start my building when we can get this done legally, and you have all standing, and you have all evidence before you to, to support you, so nobody can criticize you for doing this at a later date? And also, I, I wouldn't mind hearing from city council's counsel, city board, your, your counsel, what his opinion is on the question.
So, I have a question. Because the city council made this amendment, Part D, and it said specifically 26 residential accessory buildings in A1, M1, M2, and M3, if they would have known about this, they would have included C2 in there, right?
Well, they could have asked to do that.
Okay.
But, again.
Because they draw these amendments, right?
A residence in a commercial district is legal non-conforming.
Because he has a main building and an accessory building, and his house is a main building.
Yes, and the work that was done on his house was in interior work, so it wasn't, he didn't put an addition on.
Okay.
The entire roof was removed from half the house, and it was redesigned and re-engineered so the water would fall away from our front porch.
So, we have an attorney present. Am I correct? If the council would have included C2 in this statement, Part 26, we'd be okay, but since the city council didn't do that, we really can't.
That, had the city council done that, that would be my opinion.
Okay.
It would be okay.
But since it's not listed on here on their amendment.
Unfortunately, I, unfortunately, I agree with the city attorney's analysis of the special use statute. In order to grant a special use, there has to be, the special use has to be enumerated under Division D of the special use ordinance. That's Section 159.049. And this is an application for a special use. It's not an application for a variance or some other deviation from zoning, and so you have to follow the special use ordinance. And the ordinance specifically says, in paragraph A, that the board, made by resolution, granted use permit for the special uses enumerated in Division D. So.
A1, M1, and M2.
And in Division D, there's, there's including the newly enacted, I think that was number, number, the, the, there's 26 enumerated special uses. Adding on to an existing building in a non-conforming use is not listed as a special use, and so in my opinion, there is no special use that could legally be granted.
May I add something here? Under Part D of the statute you cited, 18, says, "Special uses listed." "special uses listed in district use regulations" is one of the things that the special use citation you made lists under item D18. It says "special uses listed in district use regulations." You go to the District Use Regulations 159.023. It says C2 general commercial district, which is what we're zoned as, can have an accessory building. So it's all there.
That's an accessory building to the business. Okay, so C2...
It does not state that.
But your accessory building has to accessorize your main use, and your main use is residential.
And it's okay to have an accessory building. The law says, that established law says that a accessory building is so common and prevalent that it is a standard accepted practice to have an accessory building and that the main building is your, is the residence. And anything outside that would be an accessory building. In fact, the aggregate value or aggregate square footage of my accessory use buildings are called aggregate accessory use. So I already have an accessory use there, and I'm just adding a little bit to it.
And if I could chime in here, again, Steve Leitinger. You know, Karen, Karen's correct here. When you, you know, prior to zoning, there was a home on the applicant's lot. Then the city comes in, they adopt C2 zoning. They adopt the rules to apply to commercial uses moving forward that are permitted in the C2 district. But in order not to deprive people of their, their, you know, property rights who already have something in place, that thing, that, that use gets to remain, notwithstanding the fact that all of the new regulations pertain to a commercial use. And as Karen said, you can only have one, one main building or one main use on a lot. The main use on this lot is residential. Any, like subsidiary building to the main building is an accessory building. It's then accessory to that use. When the commercial C2 district talks about accessory uses being permitted, that would be a, a building that's accessory to a, a permitted commercial use.
And there's no limitation on size on those, just to let you know.
Right, but the issue here is we don't have an existing permitted commercial use. Any building on that parcel is accessory to the nonconforming residential use. And we're giving a little, I think, far afield of a, a special use application here. But in any event... Thank you.
Well, I, I thank you all for hearing our case. I think it's, you know, we've laid out all the facts. I believe that you do have authority to, to issue the special use. I've talked to the city council, not all the city councilmen, but several city councilmen, and they claim that this was supposed to fix the issue and that the chart, it does seem to, I mean, you look at the chart and it says any district and, you know, they... There would not be a, there would not be any way that a person with the sizes that they tried to correct. If a person with over five acres, a person with three to five acres, or a person one to three acres, or any, a person with under one acre, they couldn't make any changes that the city council passes resolution to, to allow them to do because they're all listed the same as mine, any district, you know? And I'm sorry, but my position is, is that if it says any district, it means any district. But I've presented my case, and I thank you for taking your time. I'm ready to listen to what you have to say.
Okay, we need to vote to accept the staff report. Can I have a motion in a second to accept the staff report?
Can I make a motion to accept the report?
Second.
Roll call.
Janet Brown?
Yes.
Tim Hess?
Yes.
Ed Wiegman?
Yes.
Stacy Parks?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we need to go across, over the verification worksheet to ensure that all points have been followed. The proceedings are taped, printed meetings, date of meeting, and roll call. Each of these was done. Appeal property submitted, appeal refers to specific zoning code, subject to appeal, summarizes current zoning code.
Yes.
Proof of publication of notice of hearing in file and agenda posted.
Yes.
Has the petitioner notified all adjacent property owners? Have all signed statements been returned to the city? And have all comments been received from the adjacent property owners?
Actually, the city did that work because the Clinton Herald forgot to publish it, and so we had to delay this meeting. So I can verify that I did all that work. Actually, Mr. Thompson did it for the original. But then again, we, we had to back this up because the, it was not published in the paper, and therefore, we could not move forward.
Okay.
Were there any statements or comments from neighbors received?
Nothing.
The chairman administers oath to, for name and address of the, of the participant. The staff report, we've gone over its presentation review and a motion to accept. Site plan, necessary description material relating to intensive, intensity and extent of use provided. Okay, now we need to read these requirements, and they must be negative to, to all items to allow the special use.
Could I intervene, please?
Okay.
I think there first needs to be a determination that there is a special use to apply for.
The special use would be for an accessory building as provided for. First, you go to the main D of what Mr. Bruin had pointed out, and that lists the district uses. And that district use is, C2 district use allows for accessory building.
But for us to grant a special use permit per Part 26, it would have to be in A1, M1, M2, or M3? Not C2?
I believe that's the issue that Mr. Thompson is raising. He's, he's contending that, under his interpretation of that special use exception, that he qualifies in a C1 for a special use permit. The ordinance state is what it is, and it's your responsibility to determine whether his application meets the requirements of the special use.
Mr. Bruin, if that is the case, then in the creation documents creating the zoning board of adjustment, it empowers the board to add more uses to the list of those permitted in the C2, M1, M2, M3 districts, provided the uses are compatible in general characters those listed insofar as emission of odor, dust, noise, gas, or smoke concerned. Let them add a use, they have the authority to do that.
I don't think that issue's before the board.
We're talking about it right now, that the use is the issue.
I just don't think it was brought before, that is an issue brought before the board.
So do we have to do every three months, every, I mean, it takes 30 days to come in and see people here. Can't we resolve issues in one meeting and clear all this stuff off the table?
I believe the, the only application that's before the board is your application for a variance. I mean, excuse me, an application for a special use. And that's, that's the item that's on the agenda, and that's the item they have to address. And they have to either pass a resolution approving the application or pass a resolution denying the application based on what's been presented here today.
Could we hold the vote off? As I see that in the past, and that there's provisions for it, and it's been done before, that the board doesn't have to vote on an issue immediately. They can take it into advisement and do some checking, like with the city council, to find out what, what the city council actually said, as well as come out and see our property. And you're all welcome to come out anytime and look the place over and see if it is in agreement with what we've told you. But I would urge the board members to think about delaying this, putting it to the side, pending review with the city council people on their, what that actually says or what they meant it to say. If we could do that, then we can probably expedite the process a little bit because otherwise, you know, we're not going to get a building this year.
So essentially, you're just asking us to delay our, the vote?
Yes.
Okay. And Steve and Jim, I'm going to defer to you if, because I've never run into this, so I'm just, really don't know if they can, if the board feels comfortable and they want to move forward or if they want to wait.
What would we be waiting for? I mean, the request is for a special use permit.
Right.
So is that going to be changed to some other type of request? Are you requesting...
The wait would be to allow you the opportunity to, to see the property if you like, as well as to talk to the city council people and find out if, in fact, their interpretation is the same as the ones we're hearing here.
Karen, is the final interpretation on the ordinance? Was it the board?
Yeah, it's, the board looks at that, and then we have the legal representation. You have my interpretation, so, yeah.
Does Steve represent the council, correct? No?
Steve, the city.
He represents the city of Clinton, Iowa.
Yeah, he represents the ordinances, and then Jim represents the...
I represent you as a board.
So Steve already gave his interpretation of it, that's a no. So what, I don't understand what going to council would do to change this attorney's interpretation.
Because if they, if they felt it was something different, that's their interpretation of it, but it doesn't change the ordinance.
Well, and this matters not before the council, before the zoning board's adjusting. The, the ordinance was approved by the council. It's now, you know, its own living thing. It, you know, not every council member would have the same interpretation of what was even adopted. But the, the law is what the ordinance says.
Jim, did you answer the question as far as the council's ability to add a use?
Yes, he did. And he said that wasn't, in order to do that, you would appeal to the board, I believe, to add a special use, but you didn't appeal to the board to add a special use. You appealed to the board for...
I thought that's what we were doing.
This is a special use permit if his property was zoned A1, not C2. Because C2 is specifically not included in what the board made the amendment based off of. A1, M1, M2, and M3.
Or do you have a different interpretation, sir?
No, I, I agree, I agree with the interpretation that has been given by Steve on behalf of the city, and that's my interpretation of this ordinance as a special use ordinance. 159.049.
If the city council changed that to include C2, then this would be a request, and we could move forward, but, because I'm not seeing that on here. I can't, like, would say I can move forward with the vote.
And this vote is...
But also, the applicant is asking, since you guys have the power to add more uses, he's asking if you can do that, but Jim is saying that's, that's not on the agenda. He would have to apply to do that separately.
Yeah, he's applying for a special use for, to expand his garage, where adding would be to add C2 to the, to the allowable special use. Is that, would the...
That's correct. I mean, an application for a special use permit has to fall under one of the enumerated special uses set out in the ordinance. It's not a, there, there's, there's been no application made to add uses to a particular district that presents a whole different scenario and issue. There's been no, there's been no application for zoning variance. There's been no, there's been no other procedure pursued other than filing an application for a special use permit. So that's, that's what you're asked to rule upon today.
Just to back that, we had a housing board of appeal hearing, and the applicant during the hearing asked to change his appeal to something else, and that hearing was stopped. They had to reapply to address that changed item because that was not what the board was there for. And so we had to stop that hearing, have them apply again, come back, and do a special hearing just on the new one that they wanted it changed to. We couldn't tackle that at the same one because it wasn't part of the original appeal or on the agenda.
Right.
Is it possible to at least decide upon all the main thrust of my position short of the, the, what the city council was... City council must have, you know, made a mistake, apparently. I don't know who their attorney is there, but I know that wasn't their intention. So if there is some kind of issue...
I mean, there's, there's no, there's no fact dispute over what the ordinance passed by the city says. And this board has to make a decision based on the ordinance before it, the ordinance as it now exists. You have appeal rights from this particular hearing that you can pursue, depending on the outcome, whether you're in agreement or not in agreement, that you have appeal rights. And I think all of the issues on this application have been addressed, and the board has before it sufficient information and evidence to make a decision.
So this...
I agree, I, I agree that I'm not sure what would be accomplished by continuing this hearing to a later date. What's going to change? Nothing's going to change.
Okay, so in other words, the, what the city council put in their chart only applies to the three spots, the three different divisions that you cited. A, M...
A1, M1, M2, and M3.
Is that what it says?
Well, and we don't, you know, I'm, I'm not certain as to what their thinking was to leave it out, but there must be a reason they left it out.
A1 would be agricultural and manufacturing, I guess, you know, one, two, and three, which would be the $300,000 compound or tractor.
Yeah. Agriculture, yes. So we have no say over what the council has decided.
And again, I go back to that's nonconforming use. He's expanding on a nonconforming use.
Yeah, we, we have no say over...
He's expanding on a nonconforming use, which actually goes against the comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
But...
Except.
Pardon me?
Except.
When required by law, and the law isn't requiring you to expand your building. But, anyway.
I don't know where I'm supposed to put that, all that equipment, but I don't want to go there.
Okay. Want to go through the checklist?
Okay. And then, we each need to answer...
The problem is, if we go through the checklist technically, I don't, I don't think we can go through the checklist, because this special use permit is not applicable to the amendment of the code. I mean, technically, if we went through this checklist, it'd all be okay.
No, it wouldn't.
Well, okay.
It wouldn't...
Okay. Let's go through it.
Okay. Will the building or, should I read that as being special use? Should I say, will the building or special use permit, that type of thing? Substantially increased?
Yeah.
Okay. Will the building or special use substantially increase traffic hazards or congestion?
No.
Each of you say what you think. Okay, no. Will the building or special use substantially increase fire hazards?
No.
No.
No. Will the building or use adversely affect the character of the neighborhood?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Will the building or use, special use adversely affect the general welfare of the community?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Will the building or use overtax public utilities?
No.
No? Will the building or use be in conflict with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Will the, will it impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property?
No.
No? Will unreasonably diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area or any other respect impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city?
No.
No.
No. Okay, I need someone to make a motion, read the motion, and that's on that.
I can read that.
Okay.
The zoning board of adjustment shall grant a special use permit to allow the applicant to extend his accessory building at 823 Springdale Drive, not to exceed 5,000 square feet. The addition shall be completed within one year of the special use approval.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Janet Brown.
No.
Tim Hess.
No.
Ed Wiegel.
No.
Stacy Parks.
No.
Just a second. Your, your application has been denied. It's been denied because it did not meet the qualifications for the comprehensive plan, expanding on a residential district. They went ahead with it, but expanding a building on a residential district, you do have a path to success if you would want to choose that. Or you can, I believe, Steve, does he have legal recourse in, just in court?
He'd have to seek legal counsel. I can't provide him legal advice.
Okay. Okay. We motion to close, unless anybody has any other comments.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
This means adjourned.
Oh, Janet Brown.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I appreciate you giving careful consideration to it.
Tim Hess.
Back to the drawing board.
And Stacy Parks.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim, for your help today.
We'll keep the money in the bank.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thompsons.
Thank you.
That's, that's, everybody turn off your...
Can I make a call, please?